One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to see everybody.
Uh, vote call. Shane Bailey.
Present.
Shayna Delaney.
Here.
Darren Howell.
You.
Don Miller.
Here.
Teresa Stratton.
Here.
Randy Thorpe.
Here.
Jane Barco.
Here.
Mary, your, uh, your attorney for Sarah.
Here.
Michelle Dubalcy.
Here.
Heather House. Here. We have two minutes.
Oh, that's right. So we have two minutes to make a motion and approve.
I make a motion and approve the minutes of July eighth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Borough Council.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Jane, seconded by Teresa, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes. Extention. Motion passes.
I don't want to put any pressure on anybody, but I have a set up ten supervisors meeting this week, it lasted three minutes.
You better hurry up.
John, let's see what you can.
Motion for the August twelfth.
I have a motion to pass.
I will second it.
Uh, motion made by Darren, seconded by Shayna, all in favor. Aye. Ayes. Extension. Motion passes. Billis.
I have two additions. First one is for brown restorations, two hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-six cents for battery for the police car, seventy-five-one. Um, that's out of the general fund. And of the R.G. Wilson account, we have, um, a payment application for the job visa for seventy-four thousand six twenty-one seventy.
So the ball field, right?
The ball field, yeah.
Where'd the other battery go? Didn't we do a battery last month?
Last one's sent you back now.
Oh, okay. I'll make the motion paid and done. Motion included. Motion made by Randy, including two additions, seconded by Darren, all in favor.
Aye.
Ayes. Extentions. Motion passes. Police report.
Okay, police report from the note of August. Assisted others agencies, uh, two, hit and runs we had one. More nasal accidents, one, and public assists to a motorist, one. Uh, two suspicious persons and one suspicious vehicle. Written warnings issued was one, two traffic citations were issued. Seven ongoing investigations yet, and forty-nine incidents for the month. We also, on August twenty-sixth, had, the department had its audit by P S and P. Passed the audit, it was for security, like such things as criminal histories, security albums, uh, security where criminal histories are held. Officers managing the training for security, uh, files, case filing, our media, which is our cams, our cam quarters, how we take care of the media when it's done. That's part of the investigation or audit, and then our report system, our data system on the computer, that's also part of the audit, and some other things, but we passed.
All right, every year?
Every two, but it's the same compliances full-time, doesn't matter, if you're part-time, you're part or not, you gotta go through the same compliances, so it's the same thing. But every two, sometimes three.
Wow, okay.
Sometimes three.
All right. Any questions for the chief?
I have a question, Fred, is our, uh, computer in there or camera in there picking up the cameras at the park?
Not well, no, not that I know, not when we tried, couldn't get in them, there's something, we don't, we don't handle that part over here, it's where they're locked up at. Uh, the, you know, the, the control area? Yeah, it's in that house over there, yeah.
Well, who does?
I don't know.
How does it, why, or why does it have to be over there, is it the distance?
I don't know.
I think it was the wireless.
It was something to do with the wireless.
Wireless?
Which, you can actually get wireless for outside. I looked it up.
It's not like this in here, for these out here, they're all wired. So if they go, everything's wired in from downstairs downstairs, but I'm sure where the gentleman was doing it that evening went over there.
Yep, you can, you can get routers made for outside.
Yes.
So you could probably do, put out a pole here and, and work your way down so that it's wireless to the park, but it comes back here.
Yeah, 'cause none of those.
With our routers that you can put out.
'Cause none of those projects were through us, they were through here. So I don't know why, and they don't work over there. Okay. I don't know who's responsible, like their handlers. What? Yeah. Linking handlers will tech up, they'll tech them up anywhere. Set an alarm on them, they'll go off. They'll show the motion at night, and then he went here and took them out.
Yeah. It was something, yeah.
Ring, ring is another one.
If I remember correctly, the conversation was about the wifi and about the wifi distance and about who would be the one responsible because, like, my ring camera comes on my phone. So who would be the one responsible for that?
Safety there.
To monitor it. You know?
Safety.
He's gonna be telling me, also gonna.
But like Teresa.
Can you get in that building over there?
How, how long ago were the cameras put up?
If you can.
The conversation would have been that, that, about this, 'cause that's when they put the cameras here, would have been like two and a half, three years ago, 'cause I was there. So that's when they decided to put the cameras here on this door. I don't know when those cameras were put up, but that was, the conversation was about the wifi.
Yes. And at first they thought that the closer it was.
The stronger the signal.
Stronger the signal, and so they asked permission to put it in a cellar there.
So is it, is it possible to get a cellphone that you could just put the app on, connect it to the wireless, just, and use it just for a camera? You know what I'm saying? The phone, you wouldn't be able to do anything on the phone except look into wireless and look at your app.
My house has a link in my phone for my house, but it's probably good.
Does anybody remember the guy's name, he, he came here.
Yes, right.
Jane, they secure it.
Yeah, Jane, yes.
It should be running off this wifi, not that wifi. Then it wouldn't be any problems with that system when that wifi goes down, wherever it's at, at that address. Is it Joe, like, who even pays for that?
Yeah, that's I don't know. Yeah, who pays for that wifi that's down there?
At, at first too, they, they put it, at first they put it across the road on the garage.
It could be what's hooked up, it could be just.
Because it, because it looks towards the park.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's where they had it first, and then they changed it to the cellar. They thought it would be better.
But Teresa's right, the technology is there.
It's technology, just from three years.
Three years ago even.
Very different.
Okay, so we just gotta get ahold of Jane J and see if she can get it in here. The feed. Any volunteers who want to call Jane J?
Yeah, 'cause Chris's building is closer, like you, like South.
Well, if the trees block everything, I'll try to put it up there.
No, it should come in here off of this wifi, it should be able to run off of this wifi.
Yep.
Over there, so anybody's voluntary, wanna put on, have access to everybody.
It's just an account, you have a password to use.
Yeah.
But the, the computer itself is in that building.
It needs to be.
The modem and whatever else goes with the camera. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Darren, are you gonna contact J J or?
Sure.
So you have any problems in the park?
Um, no, somebody, there was a little bit, oh, yeah, no, there was a little bit, yeah, 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 there was, um.
I like a Z boy thing, right, if you just couldn't get who's on it, I think, doesn't.
Yeah, there was something else, one of the toys broke.
Oh, yeah.
In the swing.
Or on the floor.
Yeah, uh, I think the swing was generally maintenance, I think they.
Yeah, I think the toy was too.
Yeah, I have the handle, I mean, I forgot.
It's just, general, it's just general maintenance on both of the things, 'cause people reach out, so it wasn't intentional, they didn't know who to reach out to, that's why we had to post, instead of anything happens, please contact somebody at the borough, so we can take care of it if you see anything that's happening. Then of course you have the keyboard warriors that have all these things to say, and we're like, not blaming anybody, we're just trying to hear what happens.
Right.
Like we have a better camera and people know it's there, then, you know.
People aren't putting it up in the park either.
Oh, yes, Earl.
Earl, Earl is.
Earl's ready to quit.
It's been a big time.
He said four piles.
Even around, even around the building here.
Four piles of, you know what? Yeah, he can tend with it today.
Hmm, it does look good though when he's done with it, but.
Yeah. But he's, he, he's gonna be done with it very, if we don't do something about these dogs.
Yeah.
Dogs.
Oh, really? I thought it was a big hardship.
Four, what do you think the four piles were?
I, I honestly don't, um, maybe we should get some of them, one of those little doggy bag things.
Yeah, I had mentioned that.
You talked about that at the park.
Years ago. They're minimal, just, just, yeah.
It's just a sign that says no dog, no way I'm moving the park.
Do you really think anybody's gonna pay attention to that?
No, do you think anybody's gonna pay attention to anything?
No.
Okay.
Well, we gotta keep Earl, because he does a fantastic job, I, I thought, I thanked him last week for cutting all those, uh, shrubs down so that you can see to turn the corner now.
Yeah, looks good. All right, fire company report.
I haven't received a text from him as of yet, if I get one, I will let you know, I did send a reminder.
Mayor's report.
I have it.
Zoning officers report.
I got it. Um, four zoning permits equalling two hundred dollars, five U C C permits enforced, um, five hundred and fifty dollars. He was here seven times doing patrols for enforcement, two noise complaints, four citations, two which were for junk cars, two for operating a truck terminal with no valid permit. All are in front of the Wayne County judge for the last week, um, going to be the last week of September. Called five times by residents needing assistance with zoning, six times called for inquiries of work being done in town, update rat issue on Main Street resolved, four calls with attorneys, ordinance work, updating zoning application, and other amendments to the fee schedule. Signed the pave cut permit and plans to send it back to the engineer company for pen dot work on Belmont to start spring of two thousand twenty-six. Tax collector has given him a copy of the tax roll, and he'll be receiving his own copy next year. This is to better assist him with writing citations and notice of violations. He's available by phone, seven days a week, anyone with an issue or questions can reach out. Um, the Boots property on Maple, he received a seventy-five day continuance, um, that was agreed upon by the judge. So far, he has done nothing with the property. Also, refiling on the property owners of fourteen Maple for abandoned cars, and that's all Joe has.
Thanks, Teresa. Solicitor's report, Chris.
There's a couple things, it was requested to get the cooperation agreement to the Pennsylvania Center for Community Enhancement, part of the community and economic development. Does anybody know if we have a cooperation agreement with the ambulance corps?
I ha, I heard.
I'm assuming we don't.
Well, I have a li, I have a call into them, but Mr. Fisher's on vacation and doesn't come back till tomorrow.
That's fine, that's not my question, my question is, do we know if there is a cooperation agreement between Waymark Borough and the ambulance corps? Does anybody know?
We, we had one at the beginning when we first asked them to take over Waymark.
Does anybody have it?
I don't know. I don't.
Okay, so it's gotta be a written contract or resolution that details the terms of the cooperation, uh, between Waymark Borough and the ambulance corps. I'm not sure that we have that.
And when you say ambulance corps, you mean Cottage Hoes?
Uh, yes, Cottage Hoes, yep. So, that's seven mandates, communication between the municipality and fire and E M S providers to determine appropriate levels of financial and administrative support, encouraging cooperation to meet public safety needs. So I can't just create something and send it in just to get the money for the, uh, whatever it was they were getting, but, uh, so we have to put a cooperation agreement together, is that right?
Unless there's, there's any more in place, there isn't.
All right, so they gave me the existing one, I could send that to, uh, this office of community economic development. If not, we're gonna have to put a new one in place.
Yeah, uh, if, I will talk to him tomorrow, okay, and see if they can find it.
Uh, secondly, regarding the application for, uh, conditional use for the veteran senior citizen home, um, there was a question about fees and whether they had to, um, whether they had to pay another fee, application fee. They said that they just wanted to amend the old one. As some of you may recall, when we had the hearing here, in the middle of the hearing, um, I asked Attorney Gregory, your general application requested a variance and a conditional use. Are we amending that to just requesting a variance? Attorney Gregory said we are, so in effect, that was a withdrawal of that application for conditional use. So the question becomes, um, are they allowed to just say, we're amending the old one, or are we treating this as a new application with a new fee?
It should be a new one.
I feel so.
They ended it that night.
Yep. New application, new fee.
So I will send them a letter saying that, that you guys wanna make a vote on that, make sure it's a majority. Somebody wanna make a motion to treat their application for conditional use as a new application and not an amended one since the old one was withdrawn at the hearing? Anybody wanna make that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Randy, seconded by Teresa, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes.
I, I guess it.
Extentions.
Of course.
Motion passes.
So I'll send a letter to Attorney Gregory, telling him that Borough Council is treating that as a new application with a new fee. Now, I don't want to have this just pass through, uh, a, uh.
A loophole.
So if a court determines that no, um, I'm gonna consider that to be just an amended application and they didn't have to put a new one. I should, we should still schedule a hearing within sixty days of the application.
Is that the date there, I, I think it's dated August sixth, Chris.
I think it is, too, yeah, there it is. August sixth, so we, so we should still schedule a hearing before then, and I'll advise him that we still expect to have a five thousand dollar fee or whatever it is. Does that sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So we have it till October sixth?
Yes.
So we have to schedule it.
We have to do advertising, Heather.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, because there's no fees for advertising things for reporters and whatnot.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we need to do this on Tuesday?
Hold on.
Do we get advertised for two weeks?
Yes.
So you'll have to see them, you need to wait, right?
It's fine, there's enough time, so we just have to, we just have to figure the date now.
So.
Our next meeting, our next borough meeting is, would be October fourteenth.
So that would be beyond the sixty day.
So.
So probably like, I don't know, thirty to fifty?
No. Got it right here. Okay, thank you.
September thirty?
Time.
All right, five o'clock, I guess. Can everybody do five thirty, five thirty?
Yeah, five thirty's better.
Okay.
Uh, I'll, I'll be here.
No?
No, from the twenty-sixth to the, uh, second.
Of course now, how convenient.
Yeah, thank God, I'll be at the count, so.
From when to when?
I'll be here soon.
From when to when?
Oh, the twenty-seventh to the second.
All right, I guess we're doing it for the twenty-third?
Yeah. Let's go.
Could do the seventh.
What's that?
What about, oh, the seventh's gotta be before the sixth.
Yeah, it's gotta be before the sixth.
We, we all want Darren here, so.
Twenty-third?
We're gonna do twenty-third.
Twenty-third, twenty-third of August now? No, twenty-third of September.
September.
Now, that might be tight though for.
Advertising.
For advertising, because if I, if you advertise, you could probably go in this Saturday, thirteenth.
And then again the twentieth.
And then the twentieth. That would work.
Okay.
Can we do it for the twenty-third?
The twenty-third. And you decided at five thirty?
Sure. You think we should have it here?
Well, it's scheduled for.
I'll tell my husband that, you know, to do this later.
Yeah, all right. So twenty-third at five thirty. What was that, thank you?
Hopefully there's a concert or anything going on at the school, that's a little early for them though, isn't it?
Five thirty.
We don't have enough time there.
Yeah, it, because I'm putting a bar.
Yeah, 'cause our grandchildren would let us know when we're.
Yeah, we'll probably, it can run the thirteenth.
Hadley does, you forget.
And the twentieth.
Do we need to post, does Joe need to post that?
Joe means to post that as well. Well, it could be put, yeah, posted, 'cause it, it needs to be posted up at the property, right, Chris?
Yeah.
Text them.
We'll take care of that shit.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's all I have.
Happy birthday.
Yes, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Like social security greatbooms like you.
Um, correspondence.
Um, okay.
What was that, I'm sorry, was that it, Chris?
That was it.
Oh, okay.
We have a thank you to the Waymark Borough, a big thank you for the use of the park for our back to school night on August twentieth, the United Methodist Women. We received Pennsylvania consolidated statutes, Title Eight, boroughs and appropriated towns, a supplement. Looks like some very interesting reading, there are several copies in the back, if anybody wants a copy of that. We received a letter, we receive this every year, from, uh, S E I, right? Dear Council, as part of the Department of Corrections, emergency preparedness policy, it is necessary for us to review our mutual aid agreements annually. This is accomplished by the utilization of non-binding letters of intent between local agencies and our institution. If the attached letter meets your approval, please sign on return. And the letter is a non-binding letter of intent, the undersigned Waymark Borough agrees to allow the state correction institution at Waymark to use its facilities, the letter of intent does not apply any contract between the state, Pennsylvania Department of Corrections and the other side, Pennsylvania Department of Corrections agrees to pay the undersigned standard rate for billable services for use of those facilities. So that would need a motion later. Got there. And then, um, I have, uh, meeting minutes from the Waymark Area Authority, if anybody wants to view those. And then we received a letter to Waymark Borough Council, council, I hereby submit my resignation from the Waymark Borough Planning Commission effective October first, two thousand twenty-five. I would like to thank the Borough Council for the opportunity to serve the community and the experience of working with everyone and helping direct the borough into the future. I'm available to assist with the transition. I wish the Borough Council and the Planning Commission continued success, sincerely, Wayne H. That would require action, too.
Yeah, we have to accept that, so we're not gonna do that.
Thank you.
Oh, Wayne, it's because of the men's hat, we're sad you're here.
Get out of here.
I didn't say anything to about the men's hat, I was just.
Anything we can do to change your mind?
Jason's son Philly that.
You want free water?
Free water too.
Can you tell us why?
I have my reasons. What's regret, regret, Wayne? We'll accept it, I suppose.
Motion.
Okay. Can we do that, or are we unfinished?
I'm, yes, to that, under your business.
Is that it?
Yep.
Oh. Guests and citizens. Mrs. Miller.
On behalf of the Historical Society, September twentieth is our appreciation day, so I'm asking if you wouldn't mind if we use the entire property here and ask for the street to be closed. Um, we have Creamworks Creamery coming, Hayry, music, food, farm vendors, games for all ages of youngsters. Um, so it should be a good day, fingers crossed for sunshine. It'll run from twelve until four on the twentieth.
Awesome, okay, yeah, will we make a motion for that?
I make a motion for the Historical Society to use our property for their farmers' day, September twentieth.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Shayna.
And close the street.
Seconded by Teresa, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
No, ayes, extensions, motion passes, thank you. That's it, um, grants, committee report, um, Jane.
If you've been down to the field lately, you know that it's almost done. I'm, I'm very excited to see that they're finishing off, uh, what they're doing now is the, uh, backstop, and, uh, also they're, are, um, getting quotes for materials so that they can build the dugouts, and I'm happy to report that I sold the six telephone poles for two thousand dollars each, so that that money will be coming into the, this project, and that will be able, that's enough, I talked to Joe tonight, he said that's enough to pay for the products. He's got two quotes so far, he, he, uh, Waymark Building could not give him a quote because they don't do, uh, all these things here. So he's still looking for another suggestion of anybody who can, uh, quote on this, and the construction is the last priority item to be completed. So that Mellow, you know, he did the, he had the contract for the lights, can install electrical panels in the utility room and complete the field lighting. Please be prepared to act on the quotes when they arrive, as they are critical to the completion of the project by the completion deadline. And if you've been down there, it's amazing how the grass is grown, it's fantastic, and it's making very good turf. We would like to have in the spring, uh, the dedication of the field, and, um, if you see on the wall there, in, in back of Darren, uh, this, um, certificate there, uh, the actual date of the hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of Waymark Borough is April the eighth, and perhaps we could have, uh, the dedication of the field at that time. Or we could wait to have, uh, win the Little League, and what was other suggestion you had?
Be the first game.
The first game, would that be the first game, Little League, or, but anyway, we'll come up, I'll ask a couple of you to help me, and we'll come up with a date, uh, of exactly when we're gonna have it to dedicate the field. Um, the second thing, of course, is, uh, what we passed last month concerning, uh, the park and, uh, and the cost overrun. I've applied for, uh, a fed, uh, a, a private grant and, uh, from, uh.
The Loom.
What?
The Loom.
The Loom grant, and I've applied for twenty-five thousand dollars, and I also, um, have tried to, uh, talk, uh, to some other people that if we have a shortfall, that we can apply to a couple other organizations, and these are private organizations, not, uh, municipal, which most of the grants that I've gotten from are. So, um, that project is, is coming along very good, and Mr. Reimer has got, the go-ahead to start the project. So, uh, the park will be closed very soon, we don't have to worry about the dogs for the, a while, because the park is going to be torn up significantly. And, uh, I, I expect any day that that project will start.
What about Halloween, will it be open for that or no?
Well, we had, we, Teresa, um, Marie and I talked about the Halloween, and, uh, I had a phone call concerning it, and we suggested that we have the Halloween. Since we do it at the depot anyway, you know, and, and have, and we, uh, always pull Car Forty-three out and decorate that, people love to have the pictures taken on it and everything. We would like to have the celebration here, I talked to Michelle Turquotti, and we would like to have the celebration here at the Borough Building and at the depot. And, uh, the thing is, we might, uh, since we're getting so many people from out of town, we might have to decide, and that's up to the committee, uh, whether we're gonna serve hot dogs and all of that stuff, or whether it's going to be, uh, scaled down. So, uh, the, the committee then itself will make that decision, so, um, if it, I'd like, uh, you to back up the fact of how in the Halloween celebration here. Unless, you know, Mr. Reimer doesn't. Unless, you know, Mr. Reimer doesn't start, but I, and what I understand is supposed to start this week.
Did we get the additional money from the grant? From, you know, after we were, we were able to apply for an additional ten thousand, was it? From the?
From the state, yes. We're getting ten thousand dollars from, uh, their, um, Department of Commit, oh, Department of Conservation and Natural Resources.
Okay.
And they are giving us ten thousand dollars to, for the shortfall. The shortfall is between thirty-four thousand and forty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's why I'm going for some private money to supplement that.
Okay.
Jane, are they gonna fence off the park when he starts?
Yes, he, he, he's very safety conscious, what he's going to do.
I just don't want kids going in.
And anybody who has an idea will go down, if you'd like to go down the park, I'd appreciate it. And the Veterans Memorial that has all the names on, uh, look at the back of it and see if you can come up with a suggestion of how we can take those seed words off the back of it. Of it, it's aluminum.
Hmm.
That, uh, marker. But I need, uh, I need a motion to have a Halloween celebration here at the depot and at, uh, uh, the museum. Cause after I own, be owned by them, the museum's on.
I'll make that motion. Motion by Randy, seconded by Tommy, all in favor. Aye. Nays, abstentions, motion passes. Thanks, Jane. Is that it?
Only close the street for that too.
That's probably a good idea, you know?
Yeah.
They give actually, you know.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people.
Well, we also have a DJ that usually comes and we have the bus that comes. Like the property here and property there is not gonna be big enough. So we have to shut down the road if we're gonna do it. Because that bus is like a main attraction. People love the DJ.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I don't know how many we're gonna get coming now. Cause if the parks close, like a lot of the kids like go on the stuff, listen to music, you know, it's kind of like a.
And we close the street down the road.
I think if we close it down and we kind of spread it through the road, you know?
Like a street fair.
Like, yeah, like a street fair and see if we can get some other like
Yeah.
Well, the, the parties in the park group, you know, I, they're looking for.
Well, I've heard of parties in park group, but it's the first I'm hearing about it, so.
Yeah, they're, they're looking for more people to volunteer down their committee.
Hmm, okay. All right, what should we make another motion to shut the street down? It's probably a good idea. Okay.
I think, uh.
You can lend that a little.
Yeah.
And, and, um, I'm pushing that the street, if you.
Motion to move the Halloween celebration to the depot Borough Building and Street.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Hold on.
Okay, we'll make a, a vote.
Randy made the motion, Don, Don seconded it.
Yeah. Okay, we'll steal another vote.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. The amended, uh, motion, aye, uh, nays, uh, abstention, motion passes. Okay. Is that good? Is that it, Jane?
That's all right now, yes.
Thanks for selling the polls, Jane.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm trying to sell the lights now too. And, uh, I'm praying on that.
Mm-hmm.
So. The wonderful, and the thing is, the polls will be here in this area.
Hmm.
Because I guess we can reveal, but don't put it in the minutes. Uh, it's going to be keen light.
Hmm.
And my goodness, the grandchildren are gonna take a big hand right now.
All right, um, budget finance.
Okay, um, we had a, a workshop on August twenty-fifth, um, regarding the twenty, the twenty twenty-six budget. So, um, we talked about EIT at one percent, whether we would implement it or not. We decided EIT at one percent, we wouldn't do because the school would just take half. So we talked about doing a referendum on the ballot for point five. And this would be, um, to see how the town would vote on an EIT tax. Um, five hundred and nineteen individuals work in the town. Three hundred and seventy-two of those residents already pay an EIT. So that the remainder are in the town and don't pay it. Um, I talked with Amy at the election office and it's too late in the year to do a referendum. Um, with that being said, I made a call to the Borough Association and I spoke with Wendy. And I can give anybody the phone number if they want to confirm this. Um, Wendy did say that we could do a petition. We can petition, petition the working residents of the borough to see if they want this EIT implemented at point five. To bring this start of, it would be ninety-five thousand. I, I got a report, um, at point five percent and it would be first year would be generate approximately ninety-five thousand to a hundred and five thousand in revenue to the borough in two thousand twenty-six. The first full year, two thousand twenty-seven levy at point five percent would generate approximately one hundred and twenty-seven five to one hundred and forty-two five. So that's what I've got regarding the budget two thousand twenty-six and the possibility of doing an EIT at point five percent. If anybody wants to take a petition around to residents that they live near that work or that currently work in or out of the borough, they would put a yes or no. So if anybody wants to take petition around to petition the working residents, maybe.
So we can get it on the ballot where we have another way to ask the residents of Waymark if they want it implemented or not.
Yes. Yes, so this.
So what's your control on the petition? It's just whoever you hand it to, that's who gets it?
Well, you take.
Or is there a way to do it digitally or?
I would still rather have it on a ballot.
No, you would, you would take it to borough residents. They will put their name, address, phone number, signature, and whether they currently work in or out of the borough. So like, I work out of the borough, I'm gonna put no. So my money would come back.
So if only a hundred people answered it.
It's still a community speaking out. It's not just us sitting here and voting on it.
Mm-hmm. I know, I, that's why I would still rather have it on a ballot.
But I still have a permit, we, the Borough Association said it is okay to do this. So if anybody wants to take it around, we'll see how many we can get to sign it. And take it from there. Ninety-five thousand is a lot of money to say no to.
But it's still, the only reason the borough is having any issues at all is because of attorney fees regarding otherwise, we're due in various ways. We always have been. But the past year and a half, we've been getting slaughtered with attorney fees. So I want to see it on the ballot. I don't want to see petitions going around personally. And I think we should make a motion on it to pass the petitions around.
As a private citizen, I can still pass a petition around. Cause I asked her and that's what she said. As a citizen or, and it, and it doesn't matter that, I am, I'm council. As a citizen of this town, I can pass a petition around. That's why I called her and asked her.
Is there any way we, we can do it to where like, uh, I don't know, we advertise that there's a petition here and people could come in and sign it here? That way, if anybody does, whoever gives a shit or doesn't, you know, if they don't, they're not gonna show up and do it. If they do, if they, if they vehemently oppose it, then they're gonna show up and vote, no, I don't want this. Or vice versa, you know?
You're making, so like a, like a mock voting ballot?
Yeah, it's, you're not going, it's not on a ballot.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if it's on a ballot, you have to show up if you care, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
What's on a petition, well, you have to show up if you care, here. It's still a petition, so it's still okay.
Uh-huh.
We still get a little bit of control with, hey, you have to go to that place to vote for it. We may have to go to this place to give an opinion on a petition.
Mm-hmm.
So that's just a compromise idea, I don't know.
Post it at public places too.
Right, yeah.
So set up a box.
Mm-hmm.
So, so basically, like, set up a box and have slips of paper there? Yes, no, is that what you're saying?
I, I don't know, we just advertise a date that it'll be here and people can come, you know?
But how many of, how many?
And that, and, and I like, I, I like that idea, but we want to make sure that they're borough residents. I don't, you don't want to file an ad saying, come and vote for this and Joe Schmo just walk in and, and vote. Whereas this, it actually has their ad, they have their address and a signature, so it's gonna state that they're in the borough.
They have to write their, right?
What's that?
They have to write their address on it?
Yes.
Right, so the person that shows up would have to write their address on it. Same thing, they're just coming here to do it.
You mean on the ballot?
And then.
On the, on the little case.
Come here and sign that.
Oh, you're saying we have this, we're coming signing this paper.
Or we can just go through the registered voter list that you get and verify
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a little more tedious, but I think it's better.
That they're registered voters and are. Part of, they're either registered voters or they're part of the town. We have something to go off of.
Well, I have.
Just one, I'm just wanting to walk through.
Hmm.
Unfortunately, half the people in town are registered.
Well, it would give me a start.
Hmm.
It would give me a start of.
Well, I, it seems to me it'd have to be a majority of people. I, any minority, to me, would be.
Total voters in, report eight hundred and fifty. There's eight hundred and fifty registered voters.
So that's over. Yeah, that, that's over half of the people in town.
That I believe are us.
And that's.
That's because I haven't even petitioned.
Is that being, oh, okay, so your petition was both parties?
Right, this was, yeah.
Okay, so over, well over half.
And this is even people that are independent or whatever.
Right, we have twelve hundred citizens, there's eight hundred and some, yeah, well over half.
Eight hundred and fifty.
Like three quarters.
And then what do you do with the petition?
Well, we would see how many people want it. If the majority of the town that work, which is five hundred and, what did I say, five hundred and?
Five hundred and seventy-two something.
Five hundred and nineteen individuals work. Whatever your majority is. What if we get three hundred and fifty of them? That's the majority of five hundred and nineteen. Ultimately, at three hundred and fifty, you're. If five hundred and nineteen people work and three hundred and fifty of them come in here and say, yes, we want it, that's your majority.
I understand what you're saying, but it's not a majority of the people who live in Waymark.
You still gonna vote against it? It doesn't affect the majority of the people. It affects the, the working class.
Yeah.
It'll only be the voters. If you're putting it on the ballot, it would give me the same result because it'd only be the voters that are actually coming to the ballot anyway.
Hmm.
Do you know what I'm saying? Like, it, it, it would.
There's no.
Doing it off the voter list actually gives you maybe more of a look at the actual citizens of the town that might not be registered to vote. I, you know what I mean, like, if.
And, and, yeah, and putting it on the ballot, how many are gonna walk in that don't work?
I'd still say it's discriminatory.
To who?
To people like me. I don't have.
You don't, you don't have to pay it.
I know.
But yet you sat here and said, well, let's raise the real estate tax, which would affect you. And you're for that?
I'm for everybody in the town sharing equally.
Okay, well renters, renters don't pay a real estate tax.
And not. And if I could.
So, isn't that discriminatory?
They always do.
Yeah, believe me, it's paid.
Yeah. So where's a public place that we can post this?
Here, no?
Well, no, cause it's not open.
Sign up and ask who's coming here.
Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe.
We have to leave it for a certain, I mean, uh, easily for a month at the post office or, I don't know, gas station or, I don't know, we're, we're on some public in town.
No, we can do that. We can leave it at the bank. You can, we can leave one at the insurance company, uh, the post office, but we can still do footwork.
Yeah, if you want to do footwork, sure. I'm not going around town for sure.
No, and you don't have to. I'm just saying, I have copies for people if they want to.
Okay, well, I guess, any other thoughts, questions, concerns?
Well, last month we passed an ordinance for clean energy and now we're going out to ask people who can raise their taxes. I just wanna know in this town term liberal and Democrat, that's all I know. It's a rhetorical question, nobody needs to answer it, okay? But no, that's a private citizen speaking. You, private citizen could do whatever they want to do.
And we make a motion.
And. Make a motion on what?
There's no motion to be made.
Okay.
No motion to be made. She's saying it's the right of a private citizen to put it on the ballot. If a private citizen wants to exercise that right, I haven't researched it. I don't know if it's true or not. But if Teresa wants to do that, and that's what she wants to say, she's free to do that. We'll obviously have to take a look at it if, uh, if the threshold is not. And make sure everything's done well.
Okay.
Um, and on another note, police budget looks pretty good. Um, Public Works really needs to be careful. Of the ten thousand that was allotted for this year, they have eight hundred and fifty-seven fifty left to last until December. And that's all I got.
Questions, thoughts, concerns?
Um, give it all to girl. Next one. Thanks for the dog, good thing.
Teresa, do you have that section in the Borough Code that was referenced by any chance by?
Section of, what do you mean, the, the section of the Borough Code?
That you're referencing, what you're referencing. Did Wendy give you a section of the Borough Code?
I called Wendy. About doing a petition as a private citizen?
Yes.
No, she just said that there's no problem with it. I'm doing it as a private citizen. I'm not walking around saying, I'm a.
No, I mean, I, I, I'm leaving enough.
Yeah, no, she said that.
I'm not saying anything here as I'm reading through the Borough Code. I'm not saying you can't, I'm just, I get a little help so that I go.
Yeah, no, she, she didn't give me any codes or anything. She just said that there wasn't an issue with it.
Okay.
Um, do you want her phone number?
Any questions, Teresa? Um, streets and roads. Um, Leroy is requesting some concrete blocks for the inside of the new material shed. So when we do get material, um, we can push up against the blocks. Um, but I don't have a cost. So I'll have to get you a cost.
Oh, Jersey blocks or?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Parks and Rec?
Okay, so yesterday I went to the ASA, which is Agricultural Security Areas One-on-One Class. Does anybody know if we've ever been part of an ASA?
What does, what does ASA stand for?
Agricultural Security Area, which basically is protecting a person's land. So.
Too late, we're putting solar panels on the old farming camps.
So, well, it doesn't even matter because technically we don't, that's why I'm asking, because technically we're not even gonna qualify, because it has to be two hundred and fifty acres within a municipality. They have to be, the parcels have to be ten acres or more and they have to produce two thousand dollars worth of agricultural production to qualify. I don't know if any.
Two hundred acres?
I don't know, two hundred and fifty acres to establish, let me finish, don't get the wheels turning. To establish it. Okay, if we were to do that, they have to, the landowners have to submit an application. The application, you have to have three copies. Then you have to have an agricultural advisory committee, which consists of three active farmers, one citizen, and one chairman who is a member of, of a governing body. All volunteered, of course. Um, if somebody was to want to put in an application, they can buddy off a different municipality like Clinton Township or South Canaan. Um, from what I heard, from what I saw, and I have all the paperwork they gave me, there's no benefits to the landowner. There's no benefits to us, but accruing more and more costs of advertising, um, reporting with the court. And like, it's not like Clean and Green where if you're part of Clean and Green, you get a tax break. And if you decide to bail out of that, you have to pay that back. Like there's, there's no benefits to the landowner or us. So. That's all I have on that. But if anybody wants the paperwork, you're more than welcome. I also have the link to the ASA manual, which is about five hundred pages and I was not printing that myself. Um, and the only other thing I do have is I did start the Facebook group. I got through it today. Um, for the Waymark Hundred Seventy-Fifth, so I invited people that I know on Facebook that are residents who are near Waymark that are willing to, um, help out. And then obviously I have to get with Michelle and the fire company to start a date to kind of see what, when we're going to do it, um, if we're gonna buddy off them for the parade day or if we're gonna do something else. to kind of see what, when we're going to do it, um, if we're gonna buddy off them for the parade day or if we're gonna do something else. But the Facebook group has started, so if you want to be invited to that, and you're on Facebook, I'll invite you. If you're not on Facebook, I will gladly let you know when the meetings are.
Um, what is the name of your page?
Yes. Waymark One Seventy-Fifth Celebration. Simple, easy, and I will put a, I'm going to take a picture of something that says Waymark Borough,
Thank you.
something that's gonna be the cover page.
Thank you.
I just didn't have anything in my camera roll that did that, so. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Don Miller. Safety Darren.
Nope.
Safety tip of the day. Purchasing and, Randy?
Nothing.
Nothing. Unfinished bis, unfinished business. Motion on SCI paperwork. Uh, what was that?
It's the, it's the agreement entered, it's the agreement every year that the borough enters in with SCI. And if there's an emergency, SCI can use the building.
They can use this as a, a.
Present?
As a, as a.
It's just like when we had the, the flood in two thousand and six.
Mm-hmm.
We, but since all four bridges were underwater, we met up at, at, up on the hill and we managed to administrate all this is there.
Okay.
Yeah, motion to sign it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just a motion to sign it and send it back.
Yeah, let's me make a motion.
Oh, okay.
I'll second it.
Darren made a motion, Shane has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, nays, abstention, motion passes. And Wayne's resignation letter.
Who's that man?
Blah, blah, blah.
We like Wayne.
Thank you for your service, Wayne.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
I make a motion to accept Wayne's, uh, resignation and I thank him for the years that he was on council and for paying, uh, all the funding for everything. Thank you.
All second.
Motion. I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Chris.
I was just gonna say, must be an awful job. That's two resignations in three months.
Yeah, we're not very good employers.
You lost half the group, right?
Well, technically, they're not employees because they're not paid.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Maybe if they were paid, they'd stick around longer.
I don't know, Wayne, what do you think? We, if we throw some Benjamin Franklin's your way?
It would be helpful, but, uh, no, not a game changer.
Can we come back and visit? I don't know where, where we're at.
Did we vote on that?
Yeah, let's, let's do the motion real quick. Motion, uh, was made by somebody. Oh, Jane?
And seconded by Randy for.
Okay, all in favor? Nays, we should all voted no.
Why we should post?
Motion passed to fire Wayne. You know, we fire Wayne. You'd be quicker if you were you.
That sounds better, yeah.
Maybe we ought to post the position and see if anybody's in.
Yeah, well, now, well.
Gonna need them.
Actually, we have to, um, appoint Dean and then who's the other?
She has appointed already, isn't she?
Wasn't there a, um?
Dean is already on, we already voted him in.
Oh. Wasn't it Chaney where we?
Kind of his husband.
Oh, right, right, okay.
The only problem I have to say with Tim, where did you permit it during football season, he can't make these meetings. So if he needs to be present at these meetings and during footballs, he would not be able to do it. Sorry.
Your dad.
So you should have.
Well, that's right, Doug Bailey was too.
Yeah, he's his father.
He's an alternate, yep.
Oh, he's an alternate, so we have to make him.
So if he needs comes to the next meeting, we need to appoint him.
There were years where sometimes they never met, any of them. So nobody?
Yeah, so Dean's all alone now.
Yeah, good though you back there, how long since everybody else?
I'm not gonna tell them this. Uh, all right, well, uh, new business?
Oh, just some quick research, you know, this is AI, it's not directly from the Borough Code. And Pennsylvania Borough citizens do not have the power to initiate a tax increase by petition. I'm not sure what Teresa's talking about, whether tax increase or a new tax, um, procedure. It says under state law, the decision to raise taxes rests with the elected Borough Council. Wherever citizens can petition for a referendum on other issues such as government organization. So I think what Teresa's referencing is a referendum to change our tax, um, basically our whole tax structure. So I'm not sure if, uh, if that falls under a referendum now. That's all. Uh, referendums, although not applicable to a tax increase, Pennsylvania law does allow for citizen-led referendums on matters of government structure. This involves a petition process that places a question on the ballot for public vote. The process is governed by specific rules and is managed by the County Board of Elections. Okay? So I think that's what you're referencing.
So in other words, it couldn't go on until?
Next year.
Next year, anyway.
I, I don't know about time. Don't know.
Okay, any questions? Uh, motion to adjourn? Sure. Randy made a motion, Darren stated all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.